Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Our special guests in the audience are city leaders from South Euclid and Lynnhurst. Thank you. And for everyone watching online, we are going to call it the order, the regular meeting of the South Euclid Lynnhurst Board of Education. Today is September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the time is six oh one P M. Mr. Hill, may we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Falkenberg.
Here.
Mrs. King.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mrs. Sheldon.
Here. Um, pledge of allegiance. If everyone can stand, the flag is in this corner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, item two point one, being on report.
Awesome. Um, I'll, yeah, I'll jump in with legislative report. Um, so the, uh, general assembly has been on recess all August, but I will just mention a study. Um, so hu- the one hundred and thirty-fifth General Assembly commissioned a study to evaluate the needs of economically distressed students, effective services, and the cost of providing them. The study was recently published by O D E W, and it can be read, it's online. Um, but what I found really interesting, the study found that Ohio underfunds economically disadvantaged students by a little under thirty-three hundred dollars per student, and that Ohio needs to invest forty-eight percent more per economically disadvantaged student to adequately meet their needs. Um, the study goes through some recommended changes to the current funding system, including replacing the current disadvantaged pupil impact aid formula with the single funding weight, um, for each economically disadvantaged student. And the suggested weight would be applied to the statewide average based per pupil funding amount with the aim of increasing the D P I A funding transparency and stability. I thought the study really interesting. It is two hundred pages, but they do have like overviews and recommendations throughout. Um, yeah, I found it really fascinating. Um, that concludes my report.
Disturbing.
Oh, yes. It was nothing, you know, nothing we don't know, but seeing the numbers is great.
Um, I did not get anything from, um, from the board this month, but I did go back to education week and read some of the reports recently. And three that I found encouraging that students are working on. One is climate change, that despite, uh, what certain, um, people are saying about the climate, that these students are concerned because this is our future. And so there are groups in many schools of the, one that I was looking at, um, first and foremost was in Colorado, and they kept pressuring their board and administration to make some changes. And lo and behold, they finally did and, and saw some improvements in cost saving as well as, um, just lowering the, the temperature, if you will. Uh, the second is gun violence. Um, that there are groups in many schools. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure if we have one in the school, but certainly in some of the area schools, there are, um, students against gun violence groups, and they are working to control the liberal use of guns and to protect themselves, which I find encouraging. And thirdly is, um, the, um, gay and lesbian, gay and, yeah, G, L.
LGBT.
Uh, G B, G, yes, but the gang lesbian group, I think, is what we had here when I was here, and I think that still, um, excuse me, that these students are continuing to protect each other and to protect their freedom, free, excuse me, their freedoms and, uh, mental health. That's the end of my, sorry.
I don't have all the answers.
Uh, yes.
This will go. Okay. Thank you both. Um, items, item two point two, superintendent's report.
All right. Let me change the screen here. Ooh, slideshow. All right. So, good evening, everybody. Uh, first, I wanted to say thank you, uh, to all of the city officials that are here. Um, we truly appreciate all of your support from the city of South Euclid, the city of Lynnhurst, um, as well as our kindling partnership. Um, here, here, once again, did an awesome presentation at our last board meeting, really excited to have you back. So, thank you. Um, tonight, what you're going to see from us is a quick recap of the levy, um, as Josh is going to be talking a little bit more of the five-year forecast for us tonight, and kind of explain where that's at and where we're heading. I'm going to review a little bit with you, um, some of the things that we have available on our website, the master facility plan, and Mr. Fuller wants to jump in. He can always feel free to do that, as he loves to do that. So, with that, um, our first slide tonight is five-year forecast. And Josh is going to hit a little bit on how this looks and why it's going to look a little different.
I have a quick update. Um, the five-year forecast, uh, previously was due at the end of October, um, and then they moved it because there was always resubmissions with levy passages and having a levy on the ballot. Uh, so they moved it to the end of November. Uh, now, within this biennial budget, they actually pushed the date up to October fifteenth, which is the earliest it's ever been. Um, and with that, they also, it's no longer, what your submission is no longer a five-year forecast, it's now a four-year forecast. So, you have the four years of projection out instead of the full five-year. Uh, and the way that's coming along, I have it completed. I was just, uh, telling Crystal that, uh, I am ready to hit send to send it to you guys. And I know the timing of this, typically, I like to do a special meeting in between to present it. Um, but the way we had to flip flop in order to meet the fifteenth deadline, um, I'm just going to present it and ask for approval on the fourteenth, when we meet next meeting. So, um, no surprises. We're still showing the same deficit in twenty-eight that we were. Um, uh, obviously, looking at the timing of it, you would hope that with us having a levy on the ballot, that we wouldn't have to do the double submission. But, uh, the other thing also is that they did change the timing of the second submission, and it's actually more drastic of the two changes, in my opinion. Uh, instead of doing a May update, now the second submission is in February. So, it's a little bit earlier. Um, and I think, just my personal opinion, it seems like it's a little, the timing issue could be a little bit off, especially if you have a levy on the ballot. I'm going to submit, you know, upon passage, I would submit a new one, and I don't think a whole lot's going to change between the end of November and February. Um, I'm going to try and do budgeting a little bit sooner so we can have that enrolled in there and have some sort of a difference. Otherwise, it would pretty much be the same forecast. So.
So, with that, one of the questions that we continue to get, and I know I touched on it a little bit, um, we have a slide up here. It's titled balancing the books. And what does that mean? So Josh just said that we're showing red in two thousand and twenty-eight. And with that comes fiscal caution from the state of Ohio. So anytime, again, the state would come in, if we're showing red in two thousand and twenty-eight, and we have to be able to prove how we are going to get in the green by two thousand and twenty-eight. With that comes cuts. And that's where we come in, and we would rather decide what we need to cut back on versus the state coming in and telling us what we have to cut back on. Then I get the question all the time of, what is that? Well, to be honest with you, it starts with administration. It goes down to teachers. It goes down to programming. It goes down to extracurriculars. It goes down to transportation. All of those are main categories that we look at. Is that, anything?
I think the biggest thing me and Dom talked about, um, in my philosophy, and it was nice when he came in, he has very similar philosophy. You see too many districts spiral into fiscal caution and swing the pendulum too far the other way. And then, within three or four years, they're in academic, same, you know, same dilemma, academic caution, um, and start going down that road. We don't want that. We want to look at cuts, like he said, from top down and kind of figure out what that looks like so we can, less impact on the classroom, uh, the better, and try and get to that spot. But he's a hundred percent accurate in the sense of, uh, we got to figure this out fast because the deeper it gets into the state oversight aspect of it, the heavier the state is involved. And if we lose less, if we lose more control over what the cuts will be.
And just to recap, Josh, if you can click on those links for me. So, the ri- before we even decided to go on the levy, when Lee Fuller was our new business ops person last year, he came to me talking about, I call it the guts of the buildings. And it's funny because I actually sat in today with Ms. Harris and Ms. Thompson and Ms. Cash and Ms. Betts, give her a shout out, Alumni Association President and Secretary over here. But we talked and started to plan our hundred-year, um, celebration for Brush, uh, which is next year. And with a hundred-year-old building, you can imagine some of the things that go on it. Uh, we've done an outstanding job of, to use the words of Jamie Van Neck, to putting lipstick, lipstick on a pig. And now, we have to go inside, inside and really start ha- hammering some things out. And Lee and I started going down this endeavor last year because I was telling him, hey, our P A C is going to cave in. We have to do something there, and our preschool numbers have five times enrollment post COVID. So, we have to do something with Southland. And he was like, well, that's great, but we got a lot of interior work to do. So, from that, we actually had a free auditor come in, engineers come in from Amoresco, help us go through the buildings, help Lee and his team go through the buildings. From that, we developed this master facility plan because one thing that we're never going to do, um, while I'm here is go on and talk to our community without having a plan that's going to show how this is going to work over the next ten to twenty years. So, as you can see in here, and this is a link live on our website, no games, no tricks, we have four phases that are built in to our master's facility plan. Phase one is underway. All right, this was just little leftover, leftover dollars that we had. It includes a couple of the things we're doing at Brush, as well as some high priority roofing needs. Uh, we had some roofs at the elementaries last year that displaced students, um, at Roland and Adrian throughout the year. And with that, and the B Wing at the high school, and the B Wing at the high school. So, those were our top priority for us heading into this school year. Then phase two, phase three, phase four, that's when you're going to see the renovations, um, to our P A C, because I know a lot of you, if you watched, um, last night for the forum, for the board members, um, they were in there. And, I mean, there's holes in the roof. Uh, we have a lot of it currently shut off with caution tape. The other big thing is Southland, and that's changing that over for our, for our youngest learners. And also, at the same time, prioritizing the needs of each building. Because right now, when I go around to these buildings and I do my, um, donuts with Dom, Josh is joining me this year. We're actually at Sunview tomorrow morning. The que- question's always, hey, when's the heating going to be fixed in the room? When's the cooling coming up? The temperatures are going to start dropping. When are those, when are those issues going to be resolved? I tell them all the time, I want to, we want to be able to give you answers. It might, that answer might be, hey, fall of twenty-eight, but as long as they know because of this plan, then that's showing it. Because our ultimate goal with this is to get all of our buildings to that B, B range. When the engineers came in and they graded each building, they gave it an A, B, C, D, or F. Brush was the lowest at a D minus, could have been an F. Memorial was at a D minus. Hey, those are our two top priorities, right? Then we start working backwards. Now, that doesn't mean we're not going to hit the other buildings, too. It's how we min- it's how we take those dollars and start to prioritize from there. So, each building will get a little love each time, but as we prioritize that, that's what we're going to do. And if, pending on voter, voter approval, we would be able to expand those dollars significantly. And Josh, you just want to hit on that real quick.
Yeah, it's just the different financing options. I've been exploring it, having discussions ahead of time, um, you know, whether we include this P I, roll in some other P I, and it, you know, it depends on how much we can really chip away. Obviously, each one of these phases, you know, timing-wise could be anywhere from one to five years out after the other. And depending on the creative financing options that we have, uh, we might be able to chip away at two, maybe all three of them. Um, we're still looking into that, but we, we definitely have a few different, different options on the table.
And then just a couple other links on that are public view. This is our levy information page. Um, it goes, goes through with you everything that's on the ballot, why it's on the ballot, um, how much it costs, all of those things. Again, we're trying to be as transparent as possible. And again, I've said this, I said this at the beginning, and I should say it again, it's never easy to go on a levy. Right? It's never a good timing, especially now. I get it even more. Housing market, housing market, the values went up. Our community's been unbelievable, both of them. I've been here ten years. Hey, there's a reason I've been here ten years. It's because of the support and the vision and what we can do in this district that sets us apart. And we're South Euclid Lynnhurst for a reason. We're not other districts around us. I see other districts around us and some of the battles that they have, and we don't have those. And there's a reason that we have three and a half stars, pushing four stars on the report card. There's a reason we have such high extracurriculars. All of these things, it's because of the partnerships that we've developed, the partnerships that we have, and our teaching staff, to our coaches, to everybody in between. We're different and unique for a reason, and the sky's the limit for this district. And with that, if you click next page, that's all your boring treasure stuff, Josh. No, we cares about that stuff. Let me see if I got it on my clicker, maybe. Oh, no. So, this kind of goes through the source of funds. I won't hit on this very, very long. This is just more of a, a learning moment for people. We touched base on this last time. We are significantly locally funded. And where's my slider go? So, with that, we're about, what, seventy percent locally funded, right? And when it comes down to it, that's well below the state average, well above the state average. And with that, we have to go on, and we have to talk to our communities about that support and about what we need. And it's not always easy. And what I want to highlight next, Doug, you help me out here?
Loading.
Loading. Sorry, everybody. Here we go. All right.
That's broken.
Yeah. That's, uh, we'll, we'll keep it up there. Yeah. Give me that thing. All right. So, this is the funding we talked about. Our funds come from local taxes compared to the state average, which is forty-one. We receive less than twenty percent from the state compared to the state average of thirty-eight percent and a federal fund. So, Josh, you want to hit on any of that real quick?
Yeah, the, the sixty-eight percent up there for local fund is a little watered down in the sense that this is all funding, um, which is considering federal grants. So, that's kind of diluting that number a little bit. So, yeah, we are, we are on the very other end of predominantly locally funded. We're very dependent on taxpayer dollars.
So, that's kind of the quick overview. Um, all of these, I remind people all the time, all of our board meetings are streamed on YouTube, and they're archived. So, if you have questions or you want to go back and watch last months where we really dove deep into it, um, there's also a reporter here who did a great article for us, um, in the last one. Check that out. Uh, we appreciate it. He broke it down lovely for us. Uh, with that, we have some exciting news that I wanted to share before I turn it over to the high school. Um, this is the third year in a row, um, that we've hit three and a half stars. I want to give it up for our teachers and our students. Uh, Ms. Ryan always makes the joke. She goes, man, I really wish I would have been on the board when we got these, uh, kind of a report cards instead of the, uh, instead of the D N Fs when we originally, when we originally came here. I remember as a principal at Memorial, having to go defend, uh, my D N F, um, at the report card every time it would come out for that month. And we would have to show off all these things. Watching this, watching the growth over these last few years, whether it's progress, whether it's gifted, I'm pointing to a parent back there who has a couple students, um, that are thriving in our gifted program, accelerated program. But I just wanted to give a couple highlights. Please know, um, next board meeting, our C and I team curriculum instruction and each principal will be at the October board meeting to present, because it's not my show, right? They're the ones in the buildings doing the work. They're the ones that are grinding it out with the students, with their teachers. So, I'm not going to take all of their highlights. I'm just the suit up here that gets to celebrate the three and a half stars. All right. But real quick, just a couple highlights. District earned four stars in student growth. That one, that one gets me the most excited because they're achieving where they started to where they're at. Equity gains, gap closing rating improved to four stars, an indicator that's targeted support, helping all students succeed. So, what that means is each student comes in with a benchmark and where they're at. And our supports are getting them achieving higher. So, our students are coming to us, and we're getting them to where they need to be. And language arts, E L A, now in our second year with high-quality new E L A curriculum. So, this will be our second year with it. Reason that's up there is because we're in our third year with Math and Visions, our new math program. And what did we watch this year? I know Ms. Harris seen it, right? And some other ones. Our math numbers have grown. And it's not easy that first year. I give our teachers and students a lot of credit. When you bring in this high rigorous curriculum, it's a monster at first, and it takes some time. But then the progress starts to show. Future readiness. Ms. Harris is going to talk about this in a second. Hey, she's already, look at her, she's excited. Um, college career workforce and military readiness is a new scoring category for the state report card, and that hits our kids. I've said this ad nauseam. One thing that struck me last year, and Ms. Harris knows it because we talked about it all the time, and she said, Cable, put the sheet away. And I watched all, how many of our kids applied for Excel Tech that were qualified that didn't get in. And we would have, let's say, fifty-six percent-ish got in. Eddie knows it, okay, from his time in college career readiness. What that was doing was we had all these kids sitting here who qualified, and we didn't have the seats for them to get into Excel Tech. This isn't a bash on Excel Tech. Excel Tech is unbelievable, okay, but you only get four or five seats. So, we're not leaving Excel Tech, but we're going to do more for our kids that set them up for the future because they've earned it and they deserve it. And we, the career readiness is a push, and it should be. And when you hear career readiness, that doesn't mean we're forgetting about college. Career readiness encompasses college. Some kids are going to go on that college pathway. Some kids are going to go on a career pathway. But if you're going to college, you're going to college for what? To get a career. So, it's all encumbrance. So, with that, Ms. Harris, who brought the whole squad today, I see, okay, I've got their ties. They're excited. All right, there we go.
Thank you, Dr. Cable. Give it up to my students who are running the A V. All right. Um, I thank everyone from the community for coming, um, to board president, vice president, all the board members. Um, this is my second year going into Brush and super excited about where we are going. Um, one of the things that we, uh, are doing this year, it's new courses, but we brought back some old courses. We used to have intro to broadcasting, so we brought that back. So, the students that you see now, before, they were just helping Mr. Doug feel. Now, they can get independent credit for things and skills that they are learning based off of student choice and career readiness. We also brought back a course called Coach's Handbook. So, I don't know if many of you go to sporting events, but a lot of our officials are around my age, and I won't share what that age is. But our students now can learn to, they can earn a basketball, football, uh, flag football official license. And they will be able to get paid just as a normal official would. And what we're using, we're using the middle school and our lower level grades as practums for our, for our students. So, we are connecting that K to twelve learning opportunity. We also have instituted Earn While You Learn initiative. So, students will be able to go out and work and gain credit, um, for their day-to-day work experience. Um, we are in the process of creating two new Excel Tech pathways. We have inherited the pre-nursing program. So, we'll be starting pre-nursing housed here at Brush. And we also have the most applied-for, uh, pathway in our exercise science program. I think they had a hundred and twenty-five applicants. And just to know, we only get four seats. So, we are opening up a second section of exercise science, and that is kudos to our teachers and the students who are involved in that program. So, we are busy doing all of that planning. But then we also have the Brush-led pathways. This is a design for our students who do not get into Excel Tech. So, I am looking for businesses who are looking for students to where I am a certification queen. I believe certification, helping kids get to wherever they need to be. So, looking for business partnerships where s- our students can design their own pathway. Every student's not going to college, and even if they are going to college, what can I do? What can we do as an educational hub to help our students? We are also introducing micro credentials and micro internships. So, I'm going to use my students who are doing A V as an example. So, there are social media credentials. So, if they go off to college, they can then apply at their local C S U, uh, campus and say, hey, I have this social media credential. So, we're looking at micro credentialing, micro internships. I just had a conversation with Giant Eagle on cake decorating. There is a certification in cake decorating. I did not know, and I will be the first one to taste. But we have Giant Eagle right down the street. So, it's those type of micro internships that our students will now be able to experience. Uh, we have a, uh, we're in conversation now with Tri-C on machinist. Uh, they will be able to go through a machinist program. Uh, so there are a lot of career explorations and really looking at getting our students involved in the community. Um, how can we give back to, to each one of them? So, our new innovation and our engagement, we reopen the ARC store, which will be student-led retail. We have a new, uh, new class called, uh, entrepreneurship where you can earn credits through the University of Iowa. So, our students will be running the store. We are huge on culture. We have a house system, uh, where we are fostering, um, school culture and belonging and competition. Now, when I tell you competition, it is this real-life competition that no one knows what they're going to win, but it, they are about their houses getting points. There's no prize in sight, but you know, we're working on it. Student leadership and ownership, we really want, my goal this year is really to have students lead the school. Um, that's my huge goal. Today, I had a meeting with some students on what they would like to see implemented. So, that is the big push for this year as well. Culture and our M T S S focus, everything is surrounded between academics, behavior, and attendance. So, how do all of those fit with the culture? Getting kids here on time, uh, being proactive in our climate with our house expectations and attendance and engagement strategies. I want to say that we are probably around a ninety-four percent attendance rate, which is huge for a high school this size. So, we're really pushing that this year. Again, coming in as a new leader, this is huge for me, and I would have loved four stars. But coming in as a new leader, it's not just me as a new leader. We had five new administrators, and we had a ton of initiatives that we wanted to implement. So, the fact that our instructional staff is so strong that we were able to maintain the three-point-five stars, it is, I am incredibly humbled and grateful to the staff that I work with. Um, and we want to continue to push continuous improvement through instruction, intervention, and engagement. Looking ahead. So, scaling our pathways, um, we are pushing Brush Does Business, so I'm looking for local businesses, and, uh, expanding the micro cred- And expanding the micro credentials and micro internships. That, that is the push of, I would say, the governor and the lieutenant governor. So we want to be on the forefront of what, what is to come. And plant, balancing that real-world readiness and community pride. Because it, as you will hear later, I not only am a community member, I live in South Euclid. You know, we have other administrators who live in this community, but I also express upon our students that you are part of this community and the expectations I have for them to uphold and be a good citizen within the community. Lunch highlight. So it is difficult to get our students to eat lunch, but we wanted to highlight that last week we had Orange Chicken Day and they served over six hundred lunches in one day. Lunch, we are different from a lot of schools in Northeast Ohio. We actually give our students recess because we get breaks. So they have lunch and they actually get to go outside and play. They take their shoes off, they play tag, connect four. It is a sight to see. On Friday, if you want some extra exercise, we line dance on Fridays. And we have the no, no cell phones. It, it has worked tremendously in our classrooms. We see that students are more engaged. Our teachers love it. I love it. So those are some of the initiatives that we have here at Brush.
You want to introduce your crowd back there?
So with me, and they're on a stand and they, they love this. So I have first, Mr. Jameson Days. He is our ninth grade assistant principal. We have Mr. Dylan Da- We have Mr. Dylan David. He is our tenth grade assistant principal. Mr. Eddie Hall, who is our associate principal. And we have Ms. Maureen Scully Gruber, who is our twelfth grade assistant principal. And Mr. Lamont Bradford, who is our eleventh grade assistant principal and the shortest one of all. And trust me, I worked them very hard. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you very much.
So with that, I wanted to give shout out to all the, the whole crew back there. I love seeing the kids even laughing and making, you can tell they got a strong relationship with their principals back there. And two, the other day when we was at Lynnhurst Festival at Home Days. And seeing Jameson who lives in Lynnhurst and with his family and his kids and graduating, being a part of Brush. I know everyone always tugs at Ms. Falkenberg, but just seeing, seeing those people come back and, and be a part of what we got going on. And you know, she said it best and I just wanted to conclude with the trains coming. I didn't know how else to put it, but we're on the tracks. We're moving full steam ahead. I, I laugh when she says it was a whole new team and they had a bunch of ideas last year. They had a new superintendent too. So we learned together. I think I lived over here most, most of the time until Harris kicked me out. But the train's on the tracks. We're full steam ahead and we're really excited for the future. So thank you.
Okay, item two point four, public comment. Do we have any?
None at this time.
Perfect. Okay, item three, the minutes. The minutes of the special meeting of September ninth will be approved as reported or corrected. Furthermore, the reading of these minutes will be waived. May I get a motion to approve item three point one? Can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Falkenberg? Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item four, treasure support?
Good evening. Recommend for approval, item four point one, the financial reports for month end, August twenty twenty-five. Item four point two, the bank reconciliation for month end, August twenty twenty-five. Item four point three, the investment earnings for month end, August twenty twenty-five. Item four point four, we got a couple of transfer funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-six on the agenda. Item four point five, the permanent appropriations for the county, all funds fiscal year twenty twenty-six. And item four point six, recommend for approval, items four point one through four point five.
Can we get a motion to approve item four point one through four point five?
Moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Nope. Hearing none. Mr. Hill, may we get a roll call?
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item five, superintendent's items?
Under five, certified personnel seeking the approval for multiple appointments under five point one. Under there, you're going to see tutors, you're going to see our facilitators, content leaders, as well as our resident educator program and those mentors. And five point two.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve items five point one and five point two?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item six, superintendent's items?
Under six, classified personnel seeking the approval under six point one. You'll see change of assignment, some resignations, terminations, paid leave of absence and unpaid leave of absence.
Can we get a motion to approve item seven point one? I'm sorry, six point one.
Moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item seven, superintendent's items?
Under seven, seeking the approval for the supplemental contracts. You will see that there are quite a few pages, one, two, and three. And we have a few unpaid volunteers.
Can we get a motion to approve item seven point one?
Moved.
Any questions or comments?
I just got, I have one comment. As a, when I was talking about how unique and special we are, seeing the amount of clubs, activities. And to have all of the people step up and, and lead those. I mean, you're talking over, over fifty or sixty different activities we have set up for our kids. And we couldn't do it without all those people that are appointed to do it and also the unpaid volunteers. So thank you.
And it's so important in the life of a student to have those extra curriculars to, you know, make connections with other kids that with the same interests that have nothing to do with, generally with, you know, class where.
Your gay straight alliance is still on here.
There it is, yes. Thank you, Alice.
Hearing no more comments, may we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item eight, superintendent's items?
Under eight, seeking the approval for eight point one, eight point two, and eight point three.
May we get a motion to approve items eight point one through eight point three?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item nine, superintendent's items?
Under nine, curriculum instruction seeking the approval for nine point one through nine point nine.
Can we get a motion to approve items nine point one through nine point nine?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I would love to go.
I was just about to say, Mr. Winters, are you taking, do you need chaperones? Ms. Falkenberg and I are available.
I do want to have a couple of comments. The, the Rise Up Program that's kicked off at Memorial has been fantastic. I did get an email today. I got briefed on it this morning at the ESC. That is one of those grants that might get taken away. We will know by September thirtieth. So I just wanted to be transparent. It's a fifty-fifty chance, but I just, I just want that out there for everybody to know. Also, I wanted to point out nine point two. All of our elementaries and Greenview are now fully equipped with the Louu interactive systems in our, in our gymnasiums. And seeing some of the unique things that are going on there is pretty neat, so.
Okay, hearing no more comments, may we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item ten, superintendent's items?
Under ten, just seeking the approval for ten point one.
Can we get a motion to approve item ten point one?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Eleven, superintendent's items?
Under eleven, seeking the approval under exceptional students for eleven point one through eleven point four.
Can we get a motion to approve items eleven point one through eleven point four?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Well, this is kind of over the last five different, different issues. Just every time I read the board agenda, it strikes me as to how much each district is, has to pay for so many different individuals in our community. Not just those who go to our schools, but those who are in our communities and need whatever help they might need. And again, I just, it, it's, it kind of warms my soul. But I also am fearful at times when there's this possible cuts that might happen. And so I just appreciate that we are supporting these students as best we can.
Hearing no more comments, may we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Twelve point one, information. Any information you guys want to share?
Everyone get Ms. Strannick's email for NHS on the twenty-nine?
Yes.
As well as, Mr. Engel sent the thing he invited us to the J, or the ROTC thing that we'll be hosting, which is going to be a great event, it seems. So that's this upcoming Friday and homecoming.
Yes.
Come one, come all. Welcome back. Here's the, on the twenty-sixth as well, the weekend of the twenty-sixth, so we look forward to that also. Anything happening, any band appearances or anything?
We have a, a marching band show in Lakewood this weekend. So Mr. Shamp started bringing that back last year. We get to go out and compete, so.
That's good.
Yeah.
Those are fun.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Well, that's good.
And can I ask?
Yeah, of course.
Am I October or November?
Oh.
For city council?
Let me double check. Yeah, I'll let you know.
I was so sure I knew.
And on that Friday event that Ms. Lee was talking about, we're, we're honored as a school district to have all branches of the military coming in and for, for an event. It was a, it was an ask for, from our, from our students and we are on the waitlist currently to get the ROTC program brought back to Brush. So it's another key initiative that we have rolling. So as soon as they give us the green light, we'll have ROTC back.
That's amazing. I will just add that, that it's really good to see where our district and our high school is right now. When I became a board member, these are things that we asked about, that we questioned about clubs. We always asked about clubs because our community and our kids always asked about them. We were always asked, what are you all going to do to link up the kids with the community? You require community service now for them to graduate, but where are the opportunities for the community service? And you see that, even jumping ahead of things in regards to offering our students different pathways. You know, that's phenomenal because not every school district is doing that and not every district is capable of doing it. So to be able to, because we hear a lot of complaints in regards to vocationals not being offered anymore. As well as the amount of debt that our kids can go into jumping into college. So that is actually very encouraging as a parent. So I will say, Dr. Kapel, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Harris and your team is, is great, very, very, very much appreciative. And Jim Mols, thank you. Because like Catherine said, it, you make sure it's done and you make sure we're able to offer those resources to everyone. So thank you very much. I greatly appreciate it as a board member and a community member and a parent.
And I will say, someone asked me a couple of days ago, what am I most proud of as a board member? And I said, "It's the progress I've seen in this district." There's a sense of pride with our students and our teachers, but also with our community. The pride that I haven't seen before, that, you know, they really show up for us now and they're here to support us. So I just hope that continues to move forward.
I've gone into Myers after every football game because I'm the last parent in the person anyway. But after every football game, I go to Myers. And literally about five different customers will stop me and say, "Did you all win? Did you all win?" And that is so encouraging because that, those are things that we didn't get before. So it's, it is, you become very much appreciative for that.
Right. I don't believe there's any new earned finished business. So we'll skip two point two, two point three, board policy adoption. The South Euclid Lynnhurst Board of Education approves the following board policies that were previously presented for first reading and preliminary review. The following policies were presented for first read and preliminary review at the board meeting held on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. I will not read through all of them because they on the screen. There's many, but they are all revisions. So can we get a motion to approve items twelve point one through twelve point three?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? No. Hearing none, may we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item twelve point four, OSBA delegate. Every year, the board appoints a delegate to sit in the annual business meetings at Capitol Conference and will represent the district with their votes, so. The South Euclid Lynnhurst Board of Education of Cuyahoga County hereby appoints Christian Sanders as the delegate for the twenty twenty-five OSBA annual business meeting. And in the event the delegate cannot serve, Crystal Shelby has been appointed as the alternate. May we get a motion to approve item twelve point four?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Nope.
I'll say yay.
She did ask and I remained silent. There was no comment. I'm excited. Welcome aboard, Mr. Sanders.
I'm glad to serve the community.
Mr. Hill, may we get a roll call?
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item thirteen point one, public comment. I believe we have one.
We do have one.
Yep, if you want to write your name and your dress, please.
Stephanie Ryan, five one six five Neal Drive. Hi, I am honored to be here as a chair of the citizens for continued excellence in SEL schools, loving committee. As a longtime community member, I should wear these, with deep ties to this district and as parent of four children who graduated from Brush High School, I am passionate about ensuring a strong future for our schools and our community. Over the years, I have served on the PTA, dedicated sixteen years as a board member, gaining firsthand experience, experience of the challenges and triumphs our district has faced. I firmly believe in the importance of public education and the role it plays in shaping the lives of our children and the vitality of our neighborhoods. One reality I find particularly concerning is one that Dr. Kapel talked about. And that's how heavily our district must rely on local taxes to fund our schools. This places a unfair, significant burden on our community. Because we are categorized by the state as a wealthy district and that has huge implications for us in terms of funding. It makes us more reliant on our public for, you know, property taxes as opposed to getting money from the state. It means if we wanted to improve our buildings by putting on a bond issue, that again, we would have to rely on our community to pay almost probably more than eighty percent of the cost as opposed to other districts who get sometimes a hundred percent or eighty percent. And so it just really puts us at an unfair advantage that once again, we're put in this place to have to ask for money. As many of you know, our buildings are aging. Lee and, you know, Dr. Kapel have gone on and on about what is happening. Brush is going to be a hundred years next years, next year. Many of our other facilities are fifty years old. Despite ongoing maintenance, we face those critical repairs of HVAC and boilers and space constraints. Despite ongoing maintenance, we face those critical repairs of HVAC and boilers and space constraints. And unfortunately, because, like I said, the state views us as wealthy, we are never gonna be eligible for, for funding new buildings. So we must rely on your support to keep our buildings safe for students. Our community has always been generous. And thanks to that support, we have continued to make progress. I was so excited when I saw we got those four stars. I was just at rolling the other day for, um, talking about them to PTA. And we were talking about, you know, the, the system. And I told them, I'm like, focus on progress and gap, progress and gap. Because the way that the state report card looks, we always get deemed for achievement, because we have too many groups. But we are making great progress, it makes me so happy. Oh my gosh, I just can't even stand it. Anyway. But at the same time, we can't stop with all the progress we have made. As a young parent, many years ago, I personally lived through a time when we had five levies on the ballot in a five-year span. Can you imagine that? Five levies. In two thousand and four, we put up two, we failed to. In two thousand and five, we put up one, we passed it, thank God. Two thousand and six, we took a little break, two thousand and seven, we took a break, two thousand and eight, we went back on the ballot, failed, and then came back and were able to pass it. But during that time, it resulted in so much instability and uncertainty. Because you're forced to constantly cut things repeatedly while chasing new dollars to keep your schools running. The cycle is unhealthy for students, and it's unhealthy for staff, and it's unhealthy for the entire community. That is why I am wholeheartedly supporting this issue fifty-two in November. It's why I am volunteering my time, and many residents are volunteering their time, volunteering their time as, uh, levy members, because we understand that continued support for our students, our teachers, and the essential services that they need to keep these schools strong and safe. So I'm encouraging people to please vote for issue fifty-two. To learn more, voteforselschools.com, they're, or, dot, or, they're not allowed to say it, I am, voteforselschools.com. Look for us on Facebook, invite friends to the Facebook page, share the Facebook notes. Because the last thing I want to hear is people say, I didn't know there was a levy, because that'll break my heart. So, uh, thank you for your time, I love this district, I'm so excited for all of you, congratulations. And again, vote for SEL schools, thank you.
Okay, item thirteen point two, executive session, there is no need for executive session tonight, so we will make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.